Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council meeting. This is a regularly scheduled council meeting. I will call this meeting to order. The time is 5:30 PM. Today's date is Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Bearbo?
Present.
Freedle?
Present.
Paulson?
Present.
Beyandich?
Present.
Darren Zelli?
Absent.
Johnson?
Here.
Coffey?
Present. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, and for clarification, we have an audience today. Dave Tuttle from VIDA. We have Eric Wedge from DSGDW, our Park and Rec Director, Brian Silber, and our City Attorney, Brian Lindsay, along with City Administrator Britt C. Bennis, and our Finance HR Director, Sherry Erickson. We have Item 4 on the agenda, which is the public forum. Is anybody in the audience like to speak before the City Council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to Item 5, which is the Consent Agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a counselor or a citizen of the City of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and corrections of the minutes, 5.1A, of the regular meeting that was held on October, I'm forgetting, on August 25th, 2020, and Item 5.1B, the special meeting that was held on August 26th, 2020. Item 5.2 is the adoption of Finance Resolution Number 20-017, the Schedule of Bills. Item 5.3 is approve the 2 AM liquor license for K-Cor Incorporated doing business as Mel's Sports Page Bar and Snickers Pizza. Item 5.4 is approve Pay Estimate Number 3 to Kraus Anderson for the MECC project, the Miners Event and Convention Center project, in the amount of $357,539.8. Item 5.5, approve Pay estimate Number 3 to Kraus Anderson for the Ewens Field redevelopment in the amount of $157,057.89. In Item 5.6, approve the following transient merchant applications for the Food Truck Festival that's going to be held here in Virginia on Chestnut Street on September 12th, 2020. Item 5.6A, Dave Cappenelli, Cappenoli, excuse me, doing business as Cappy's Kettle Corn. Chris Carney, doing business as Simply Nuts. David Johnson, doing business as T&amp;D Concessions. Item 5.6D, Larry Lanska, doing business as The Kettles Best Kettle Corn. 5.6E, Michelle Fowler, doing business as Michelle's Doghouse and Grill. And 5.6F, K&amp;B Grill and Cheese. Item 5.7 is approve the travel request for Bob Olivanti from the Virginia Fire Department to attend the Company Officer Academy in Brooklyn Park, Minnesota, on October 26th through the 29th, at a cost of $950, and this is a budgeted travel item for the Fire Department. These are the Consent Agenda items as listed in tonight's agenda, and I'm looking for a motion from the Council.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Counsel Johnson moves to approve the Consent Agenda, and supported by Counsel Freedle. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item 6 is appearances. We have no one scheduled this evening. We'll move to Item 7, which is unfinished business. Item 7.1 is adopt the proposed ordinance amending Chapter 2, subsection 2.31 of the City Code for the City of Virginia entitled Joint Airport Commission. This is the second reading. Looking for counsel action.
I will move the second reading of the proposed amendment.
Counsel Johnson moves to approve the second meeting of the proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 2 subsection 2.31 of the City Code for the City of Virginia entitled Joint Airport Commission. Is there support?
I'll support for further discussion.
Support by Counsel Paulson for further discussion. Further discussion, Counsel Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, is Evolith's reading the exact same verbiage as ours, our language in Virginia's?
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Counsel Freedle.
And just to reiterate that this ordinance is being corrected to make us statutorily aligned with the expectations of such authority.
That's part of it, Britt, and the other part is we're changing the membership makeup, including the two city councils, that's in the ordinance as well. So it's a twofold approach.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8, Section, Item 8, 8.1, adopt the resolution approving the hiring of a project coordinator to work with the opioid abuse program. This is a grant-funded program for the project coordinator. We've delayed this until we had an opportunity to employ someone and exercise the grant. Counsel Paulson.
I'll move to approve hiring of a project coordinator to work with the opioid abuse in northern Minnesota for the City of Virginia.
Thank you. Moved by Counsel Paulson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counsel Freedle. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay. I'll move to Item 9, Committee Reports. And I'll turn the rest of this portion of this council meeting over to our City Administrator Britt C. Bennis. Britt?
Mayor, on Tuesday, September 1st, we had the committee, the whole meeting. Their first item on the agenda was an appearance by Mr. David Dinko regarding the snow removal at the hospital. He requested permission that once the hospital is sold, that he's still allowed to dump the snow from the hospital onto city-owned property at our north side. It was moved and supported to approve Dinko Construction to continue to deposit snow on a city parcel located north of Range Landscape and to direct the staff to develop an agreement with Mr. Dinko to continue using this property.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion.
Also move, Mayor, the motion to allow the Dave Dinko's Construction Company to dump the snow on the city-owned property by Range Landscape pending the legal agreement with the city.
Thank you. Moved by Counsel Bearbo, is there support? Support by Counsel Freedle. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Counsel Johnson.
Thank you. My concern at the committee, the whole meeting and tonight, is that we are, once the hospital is sold, that we'll be allowing a private citizen and a private entity to dump snow on public land. And I want to make sure that as we move forward, if that's, that everybody has the opportunity to do that. So I know we're looking at this specific, but I want to be very careful that we're not, we're not creating a, either a precedence that people can just ask us to dump snow on our land because we have a lot of land, but we have a lot of snow ourselves, or that it's, it's an agreement that, that is a contract moving forward. So I'm supportive of this moving forward, but I, I really want to make sure that we're not, this isn't a favor being done to somebody because they had moved some dirt around five or six years ago. So with that, I will be supporting this.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Bearbo.
Yeah, Mayor, I disagree with that. Mr. Dinko put over $5,000 into, into doing that land work and stuff up there. I think we could make a legal agreement to continue and not make it wide open to every business in this community because they need to dump their snow wherever, but he's spent a significant amount of money up there. And I think with this agreement, we should make it a specific agreement through the City Attorney on this issue so we don't get caught in a catch-22 with other private entities being able to dump snow anyplace on city property because we don't have enough property for other entities to dump. We have enough problems with our own dumping of snow.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and supported to approve the Dinko Construction to continue to deposit snow on city parcel and direct staff to develop an agreement to continue this use of this property. It's been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries.
Jody Grabanaski, our library director, did pop into the committee, the whole meeting to give an update on the library in her first week. I just want to say, welcome, Jody. We're very excited to have her here and excited that she's working on a plan to reopen the library, which we bring him back to the Council sometime soon. Ina Stefanic, from the principal at the Parkview School, was present to discuss information regarding parent drop-off in a bus loop for Parkview Elementary, which started today. It was requested to allow parents to enter through Alcott Park and access the West Road circling around to the south side of the school to allow for ease of buses to enter the school property. It was moved and supported to allow Parkview School officials to continue discussion with Parks and Recreation Public Works Directors to devise a plan to use Alcott Park for access to the school for student drop-off.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion from the Council.
Here, I'll make the motion to allow the school to use the park to allow their families that drop off kids to utilize the park, and we'll need to change some of the one-ways and stuff in the park. And I'm going to ask Brian after we get done with this motion if they've accomplished a working agreement at this point.
Okay, thank you. I think we have Item B and C that covers both these subject matters. So it was moved by Counsel Bearbo to allow Parkview School officials to continue discussion with the Park and Recreation Department and Public Works Director to devise a plan to use Alcott Park for access to the school for student drop-off. Is there support? Support by Counsel Freedle. Is there any further discussion on this part of the motion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve reversing the traffic flow in Alcott Park to accommodate parents to access the South Loop and allow access to drop off students at Parkview Elementary only during the 2020, 2021 school year.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Counsel Johnson.
I made that motion, and I guess I would, reversing the flow of traffic, I think is too constraining. I guess I would change that motion to allow them to determine the best way to direct traffic throughout the day. I did have the privilege of dropping off this morning, which went very well for me when I got there at 7:45, but other folks who got there after 8:00 were still there after 8:00. So this may be a matter of needing to make that southern portion two ways during the morning, because I, and evenings, because I know the school staff, when they leave in the afternoon at 3 o'clock, are, are, or when they come in the morning, they're, they're going in, and then they're coming out. So I think, I think I would make a motion to allow Brian and city staff to work with to determine the appropriate traffic flow measures for that portion of the park.
Okay, Counsel Johnson, you're amending that motion in taking the word reverse out of there and work with staff to accommodate a traffic flow that's amenable to the drop-off for the school.
The drop-off and the staff access, the school staff access.
Yes, and this will be amending this map that they proposed to us to some degree.
Yes, yeah, there wouldn't be just, it's just really confusing with, if we changed the flow on the southern part of the loop, that means it's changed all the time, and once you get into the school, you can't get out. So there needs to be some flexibility there.
So my question, a legal question, is maybe for our City Attorney, we can make, we can amend this motion that was, original motion from the committee, the whole meeting. We're making, we're amending this motion to give a little more flexibility for our staff to work with the school to accommodate the traffic flow. Brian?
You can, Mayor. This will be the official council action during the regular meeting, and so technically, the motion, the previous action was not the final formal, and so there could be adjustment made so long as it's passed as a normal motion.
Thank you very much. And would you please repeat the motion, Counsel Johnson?
Absolutely. So I would make a motion that we approve adjusting the traffic flow in Alcott Park to accommodate parents and staff to access the southern loop and to drop off students and staff to leave the school.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support with the understanding that the timeframe is 7:45 till 8:05.
Support by Counsel Freedle with the time limit conditions, Counsel Johnson?
Thank you. The 8:05, it doesn't work. There was still, no, it, they're still working on the process. That's why I'm, because if it's only for that one hour, then it's just going to be confusing all year, I think, is what the challenge is for folks coming in the room.
The intent was for the beginning of school, right? So like, should we not set a timeframe? Could we say 8:45 to 8:30?
I guess I would leave that up to the staff. My, my other thought was if you have people come in and go the proper way and go around, yes, it's going to take a little longer, but the stacking goes into the park instead of out into the street. That's what I saw this morning, is that when I drove by at 8:08, the, the police officer in front of me could not make the left-hand turn-in because the cars were at the gate of the park, backed up to get around the Southern, Southern Drive, around the playgrounds into the drop-off. So I'm thinking that if, and it could go, it'll go smoother this week. I know I spoke to the principal this morning, and it was going relatively smooth. I just want to give the staff the flexibility during that time so that when they do leave in the afternoon, they're, we're not having competing things. And I would think that street down there is wide enough to do two ways in general, but that's another can of worms I'm not going to touch right now.
I'll support accordingly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, supported by Counsel Freedle. Further discussion? Can I, Pam, did you get that motion?
I do have a comment, please.
Yes, Counsel Beyandich, go ahead, and then we'll go to Counsel Bearbo. Counsel Beyandich.
Thank you. Thank you. I did have a phone call today, and it was from a non-student parent who was confused on this whole thing with the change of the traffic flow as they just got used to going the way that we had them directed to go, and now with the possibility of having it reversed again. So they, they were just confused on it, and they wanted to make a comment that, you know, for elderly people to come in there and just, it was confusing for them as to what was happening for the school. But I also have a question. As a city park, is that allowable to be used for an entrance for the school, or should the school be having their own? And, and did we have problems before that, why now are we switching to opening that gate for people to come in the city park to access the school?
I could answer a part of that question for you, Counsel Beyandich. I think it was prior to your election to the Council, there was some discussion about changing the traffic flow when the school was built. The school actually wanted initially, in their initial inquiry, was to use Alcott Park entrances on a regular basis for school pickup and drop-off. At that time, the City Council felt it was not proper for them to utilize that roadway and wanted to keep that, at that park area. So now they're coming, and because of COVID, it's created a problem for them, and now they're asking us to make an adjustment to temporarily use this roadway system. Is that answer your question partially?
Yes, it does partially, thank you. So I guess if, when COVID comes to an end, is it going to be reversed again so the public will be aware of this changing? You know, here, we're, we're changing it one way. Now we've changed it because of COVID and the, and the traffic. Is it going to go back again? And I guess that's what the caller was concerned about. Is this an on-again, off-again thing with the traffic flow in the park?
Let me bring our public, our Park and Rec Director, Brian, who is always religiously attends this council meeting. Brian, could you answer Counsel Beyandich's question, please?
I would be happy to do so. What we are going to be doing may be a little unorthodox in some people's thinking, but that southernmost loop, or the southernmost drive, it is technically wide enough that it can be two lanes going in either direction. So what we are going to do is before school, we are going to have that be a two-way street as basically just for student drop-off. All other traffic will go through the current traffic flow around the park. And then as soon as school drop-off is done, then that will open it up that as traffic normally goes through the park, people are then able to parallel park on that southernmost section and have easy access to the pavilions and the buildings, which many of the public have been utilizing here this summer, and I foresee them continuing to utilize here this fall just to gather and socialize out in the park and continue to socialize in a safe manner.
Thank you, Brian. Counsel Beyandich, any further comments or questions for Brian?
Yes, thank you for that. One other question, does that two-way, when you make that two-way traffic, is it just to the school entrance, or is it around the rest of the loop?
It is just to the school entrance. We're going to, right by the baseball fields, install some do-not-enter signs at that point, and we're also going to be at the park entrance having a sign that directs school, morning school drop-off traffic straight ahead, not following the rest of the loop.
Okay, thank you so much for that, Brian.
You are welcome.
Thank you. Counsel Bearbo?
I do not like that plan at all, okay? You should have all the traffic going one, one way around from the park, double up the lane on the backside of the south side, two lanes going in one direction, just double side by side. So teachers park over there, correct? Along that southern edge, they park.
No, teachers do not park on that southern edge. Teachers use that southern edge to get to the teachers parking in the school.
Well, come I see cars parked there all the time on that south edge. I see them parallel or nosed in parking there every time you drive by there on the south side by the college. Isn't there parking for the teachers there? Am I misunderstanding?
Bounce side by the, that's the schools, the school property. I'm, we're talking about in Alcott Park.
Okay, you're talking, you're talking two-way traffic in Alcott, not the southern?
Two-way traffic in Alcott Park between the Lions Club Building and the Italian-American Building and Seroptimus Building. That road that's between those three buildings there, we're going to make that a two-lane road essentially during morning drop-off.
And I misunderstood, I misunderstood because the teachers park on that south side of the school.
Correct. And we're, we're not doing anything with the south side of the school. That's the schools to worry about.
Yeah, but they should have all their teachers come around through the park and then come in and park that way.
Which is what they typically have done.
Okay, all right, and I'm satisfied.
And we're going to continue to allow that.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Bearbo. Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So Brian, I do have one other question. The property then, south of the parking lot on the south side of Parkview, they built a brand-new parking lot on the south side. And then there's a little, is that all school up till the college owns the, the actual softball field, or?
No, the city does.
City owns the softball field?
Which softball field are we?
South, on the south side between Parkview and the college.
The city and the school here, within the past year, year and a half, did a property swap, so we now own the two baseball fields. And we swapped the baseball field property for that southern section of property along the school for them to do their expansion.
So my question then is, so between Parkview's new, this is so hard to visualize unless we have a map in front of us, but is there?
Give her that map, would you please? Thank you, Counsel Bearbo.
Can I bring this up to you, or no? Is that allowed?
Sure, absolutely.
This little area right here, so if they, so I think what Counsel Johnson is saying is when they're coming out, this, this is also getting stacked if people are going to turn left. Could the, if the city owns this portion, there's, were ATVs actually go here? It's like a little curb cut there anyway. Would that be a possib, would that be a possibility to allow them, anyone, excuse me, anyone turning right to go this way? And then you would keep the left people at the actual stoplight?
We can look at, into that, but I don't believe that there is good street access at that point for a vehicle without going over the curb.
Yeah, no, it's not great. If something between now and winter could be done, I don't know if that might be a possibility.
I can get with Bill Henness tomorrow, and we can go down there and look. We're also meeting with the school.
I've driven off it on accident.
We're also meeting with the school a couple times this week to go over any adjustments. The school is making some adjustments in the drop-off from this morning to hopefully tomorrow morning in educating parents on pull all the way forward so that we don't have that excessive stacking of cars through, throughout the park.
Thank you for that, Brian.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Paulson, Counsel Bearbo.
Yeah, maybe I can answer Maya's question a little bit better than she had before. When originally the school was built, we have an agreement, a legal agreement, that they can use that park as part of their land area that they need for elementary school. So we already have a legal agreement, so changing this to allow them to drive on that, I don't think is an issue if we go back and look at the original records.
Okay, thank you. Okay. It's been moved and supported. Pam, did you get, could you please repeat the motion that's on the floor to make sure that we have it accurate?
I actually have, I guess if Counsel Johnson could state his motion, I kind of, it was hard to hear him.
Right, okay, Counsel Johnson, one more time.
My motion is to approve revising the traffic flow in the best manner to allow for parents and staff to access parking and drop-off. Allow staff to do that with the school staff, city staff and school staff, which wasn't very clear this third time. One more time, to allow revising the traffic flow, not reversing, revising the traffic flow in Alcott Park to accommodate students, parents and teacher, staff access to the south loop and work with appropriate staff.
Okay, that was the motion. Did you get that, Pam?
Yes, I did, thank you.
And it's supported by Counsel Freedle? Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Brian.
I had a presentation at the committee, the whole meeting, from Bradley Peterson of Flaherty and Hood regarding the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities and what the Coalition does on behalf of Greater Minnesota and an update on the Legislative Session and CARES Act funding. It was moved and supported to approve our 2021 Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities dues invoice in the amount of $14,074.
Hey, looking for a motion?
I will move the $14,074 to the Greater, Coalition of Greater Minnesota 2021 dues.
Moved by Counsel Johnson, supported by?
I'll support.
Counsel Bearbo, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
It was also moved and supported to approve the 2021 Voluntary Assessment for Environmental Action Fund invoice from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities in the amount of $2,110.
I will move the voluntary assessment in the amount of $2,110.
Counselor Johnson moves to approve the payment on the invoice for the Environmental Action Fund to the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities for $2,110, is their support?
All support, good, Mayor.
Support by Counselor Baraboo. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Was moved and supported to approve the, approve the request from the Virginia Fire Department for the purchase of ambulance equipment under the CDBG CARES grant for the following items, two auto ventilators and cases in the amount of $5,324.52, two King Vision video laryngoscopes and attachments for $2,795.40, two ZVent portable ventilators in the amount of $27,233.64, and two iStap blood gas analyzers with attachments for $54,467.28.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move the adoption of the resolution to purchase the ambulance equipment under the grant.
I'll support.
Counselor Freely moves to adopt the resolution for the Virginia Fire Department to purchase ambulance equipment under the CDBG CARES grant funding for, for items that are listed in the invoice and supported by Counselor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. The minute it should be corrected on two ZVent portables, that it should be a dollar signed instead of a four, it's not a $400,000 expenditure, it's a $27,000 expenditure.
Pam, we'll make that correction in the minutes. Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Great. Okay, moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Brian Silber Parks, Recreation Director, gave an update on the request for additional B3 commissioning. Mr. Silber requested amending the contract with EAPC Architects to add additional requirements for the building envelope in order to be in compliance with the B3 commissioning at an additional cost of $12,000.
And that's within budget? Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
I will move the extra expenditure as it is part of our B3 and will eventually ultimately save us money in the long term.
Thank you.
All support, Mayor.
Moved by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Baraboo, to modify the existing contract with the EAPC for the MECC project and to add additional B3 commissioning requirements for the building envelope as required by our grant in the amount of $12,000. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Was moved and supported to approve the School Resource Officer Agreement for 2021, 2022, I'm sorry, for the 2020 and 2021 school year, and to submit the agreement to ISD 2909 for approval.
I'll move approval.
Moved by Counselor Paulson to approve the School Resource Officer Agreement for the 2021, 2022 school year, or was it a 2020, 2021 school year, excuse me, and it's submitted to the municipal school district number 2909 for approval, is their support?
All support.
Support by Counselor Freely, is there any? And support by Counselor Biondich as well. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Johnson?
I would like people to go to the Virginia Facebook page and see Officer Swanson's first day of picture, first day of school picture on Facebook. It was, it was very appropriate, and a lot of likes on that.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
The committee of the whole meeting, Mayor Cuffey, updated the council under discussions with Our Saviors Lutheran Church regarding the purchase of a piece of property that is needed for the extension of Sixth Street near the MECC. It was noted that the survey and appraisal had been done. The city had made an offer, and then we received a counteroffer with final negotiations ending at an agreed-upon price. It was moved and supported to approve the purchase agreement for the city to purchase a portion of property from Our Saviors Lutheran Church in the amount of $220,000 plus closing costs.
Thank you. Counsel?
I would make a motion to go ahead and approve the purchase agreement to the city for the church property, based in part on the fact that there is a contingency within our budget allowing us to do so, and it's necessary to complete the project as designed.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Freely, is there support? Support by Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you. The question I think that comes to mind that I didn't think about when we were discussing this at the committee level, do we, have we done any soil borings on this, or will soil borings be necessary for any part of this MECC project?
I believe they're done already, weren't they?
Are they done?
Yes, but we have Eric Wedge from DSGW can answer that question for you, Counselor Paulson. Eric Wedge from DSGW, Eric, welcome.
Counselor Paulson, I believe there were no soil borings done particularly on that parcel of land, but they were done in the adjoining parcels, so we have, just like the rest of the MECC, we didn't do every 10 feet or 20 square feet, so we have some pretty good based assumptions on what we're going to find there. Would we find an unknown, just like we did with the first project? The unknown was to the city's favor of not having to do as much soil correction, so we tried to put the documents out conservatively enough to not face surprises, but I can't look the council in the eye and say there aren't going to be some unhidden surprise, because the minute I do that, I'll put my foot in my mouth.
I appreciate that, and I think where I'm going with that is, just after the, kind of what has gone on with the property between the clinic and the hospital, with, with that digging and whose responsibility is it came into question. So I think that's my, my question was if there needed to be soil borings, that who would bear that, that expense? But in your best assumption, you're saying that those will more than likely not be necessary in this case.
I don't see, none of the soil borings showed any environmental issues. It just would be maybe a deeper layer of peat or unstable soils that could most likely be bridged with a geotechnical fabric. I would have to refer to Matt Reed and Dan Landris from SCH, our civil engineering team on the project, but they will be, with your approval, hopefully moving the fence tomorrow and digging water lines in that need to be done yet this fall.
Good point. Thank you, thanks so much.
Potentially, you guys have to approve this, and the purchase agreement has to go through and all of those items, but if you saw today, they were mobilized and moving a ton of earth in that west side parking lot and putting storm sewer in today.
Thanks a lot, Eric, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Wedge. So it's been moved and supported to adopt the resolution approving the purchase agreement between the City of Virginia and Our Saviors Lutheran Church in the amount of the appraised value, which is $220,000 plus closing costs, Counselor Johnson.
Is this the first reading of two?
It is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Baraboo?
Yeah, Britt, do we need to include in this resolution, because we're going to supply a fence there for the church too, and that's not in this resolution, correct?
In the purchase agreement.
In the purchase agreement, so we don't need it in this resolution, okay.
Adopt the purchase agreement, you're adopting the fence obligation.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported at the committee of the whole meeting to approve the resolution ordering improvement in preparation of plans for the 2021 street improvement project.
I will move the resolution ordering improvement and preparation plans for the 2021 street improvement project.
Moved by Counselor Johnson and supported by Counselor Baraboo. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the proposed liquor ordinance updates as presented, and if this is adopted today, this is the first reading.
Okay, thank you.
I will move the proposed liquor ordinance updates.
Moved by Counselor Johnson, is there support? Is there support?
All support, Mayor.
Support by Counselor Baraboo, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
We have no further items from that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Moved item 10, Commission Liaison Department Head Reports. First, do we have any Commission Liaison Reports from the council? Any Department Head Reports for the council? Okay, please.
Our new internet's being installed today, starting today, through this whole week, they're turning the switch to our new internet, so hopefully we'll have much more stable, better, easier time with all this.
Thank you.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have a couple items. First is, I did receive a letter of concern, an email of concern from Counselor Johnson with respect to the endorsement that I made, the political endorsement I made a couple of weeks ago. I just want to clarify, and discussion with our city attorney as well, the clarification with respect to my authority in which to do so. It was a personal endorsement. I know that, you know, the announcement was made, and there's an assumption that, or that I was making this motion and endorsement on behalf of the city. I was not. I did not mention that I was designating this as, as representing the city. Just happened to be the mayor, if I was a CEO of a company, it'd be different, but under the statute 211B.29, you know, there wasn't a request to, to ask our, our city citizens to vote for this, and in no way was I representing any individual city councillor, nor was I representing any specific citizen with respect to this. I would, I would not take that upon myself without two things going on. That, that was a recommendation that was made at the council through a resolution passed duly by the city council and, and, or if I was asked to do so in some fashion through some group of people, but that's not the case. I just want to clarify to everybody, and then I want to apologize to the, to the counselors too, because I know you've been getting some emails, you've been getting probably some telephone calls and some letters that probably detracts you from your daily work and, and your, your, your off-duty work, and it interferes a little bit with your, with your council things as well. But I just want to make sure this is just, this was a personal endorsement on my part, an endorsement I made in 2012, endorsement in 2014, 2016, 2018, and now in 2020, which because of the political atmosphere and the national attention in this particular endorsement, it created a fervor. And I know there's a lot of tension, and there's a lot of iron, a lot of motions are running high, but I want to assure you, this has nothing to do with the City of Virginia. I am not representing the City of Virginia in any way, shape, or form, I'm not representing an individual council, or taking a citizen's right to express their own opinion with respect to this. So I hope this gives you some clarification as to, you know, where I was at, you know? So does anybody have any questions or comments with respect to that? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, and I, I really appreciate you taking the time to do that and, and letting people know that we all do have the personal right to do that, and, and many of us may, but I really appreciate you taking the time and, and addressing the citizens. Thank you very much.
Well, warranted a little clarification, because there's a, you know, fine line when the, when the title before you was in elected office, it's not, it's nonpartisan, so thank you. Okay, one more announcement to make here. This coming Sunday, I'm sorry, okay, this coming Saturday, which is September 12th, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., we're going to have a food truck festival downtown Virginia. And this is sponsored by the City of Virginia and Revive Virginia, who really put this all together. And so we urge you to come down to the festival itself, we have a lot of vendors there, K&amp;B Grill Cheese, Michelle's Doghouse Grill, Simply Nuts, Cappy's Kettle Corn, T&amp;D Concessions, Quick Time Concessions, La Cosina and Cantina, The Sugar Shack, Kane makes candy, Pep's Bake Shop, The Colonel's Best Kettle Corn, Sports Page Bar and Snickers Pizza, and the American Legion Number 239. We'll all be providing food, you have a lot of food to choose from, it's probably going to be takeout only, but you can walk the streets of Virginia, and then you can shop in the different shops downtown, and you can, and our new Pocket Park, we're going to have live music. You know, at the 418 Chestnut Park and Park, there's going to be two, two sets of music being played. Horseface, that is spelled horse F-Z-C-E, so Horseface is going to be playing from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., and R and B will be playing from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. So come on down, bring the family down there, practice, social distance, you wear your masks whenever appropriate, and just enjoy the day. This is an opportunity for us to do something within the City of Virginia to help revive some of the businesses downtown and create an atmosphere for people to gather and enjoy the outdoors. So please come again to Saturday, September 12th, 2020, between 11:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. So, very good. So, thank you. Any other announcements that anybody would like to make? We have a special council meeting on Wednesday, on Thursday, I'm always a day behind here, on Thursday to discuss the budget and a couple of other items, so that's taking place at what time, Britt? 9:30 a.m. on Thursday, so thank you. So if there's no other business to come before the council this evening, we will stand adjourned. Thank you for everybody, have a safe evening. Good night.